We'd like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council to order. I'd ask that if you, in fact, have your cellphones, if you would be kind enough to put them on silence or turn them off. Going to ask that Councilman Nicholson would lead us in prayer. Councilman Jackson, would you lead us in the pledge?
Dear God, thank you for this day. Thank you for our city. Thank you for another opportunity to come together to do the business of the public with integrity and to the best of our collective ability. Please help us always remember the importance of the work we do here in God, all our actions. Amen.
My first pledge.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, present. Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher. Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Baldwin.
Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, April 25th, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, April 26th, 2022. Does any council member have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Seeing there's none. Mr. Whitehorn?
We'll have some tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Thank you. Does any member have any questions for Mr. Green concerning the property standards? Any questions for Mr. Green? Will there be a, thank you, Mr. Green. Will there be a revenue collection plan and implementation report tomorrow?
We have that tomorrow.
Thank you. We have two to speak. Of course, we have the public hearing, so we will identify that. We'll have them to speak when it comes time for the public hearing. Mr. Whitehorn, will there be any legislation added tomorrow?
I'm not aware of any additional.
Thank you. Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments. Of course, like I said, they will speak at the public hearing. We have one executive appointment to be considered tomorrow. There are no consent agenda legislation to be introduced. So at this particular time, Mr. Whitehorn, would you, I perceive, with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution number 24, authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport. And there's one amendment. Resolution 56, authorizing the approval of a price change and entering a contract with Allmatt Corporation for the purchase of 18 25 cubic yard rear loader Packers. Resolution 62, authorizing the mayor to execute certain documents and instruments relative to the subordination of the loan and mortgage relating to Coventry Place Limited Partnership. Resolution 63, declaring certain city of Shreveport, Louisiana, supplies, materials, and equipment, specifically vehicles, to be surplus and to authorize the purchasing agent or her designate to sell and dispose of said surplus property by public auction. Resolution 64, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 25% interest by Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of an oil and gas lease to Mammoth Minerals LLC and FPCC USA Inc. Resolution 65, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to consent to the partial assignment of an undivided 30% interest by Mammoth Minerals LLC to two oil and gas leases to FPCC USA Inc. Resolution 66, authorizing the mayor of the city of Shreveport to sign a consent of the assignment by Pine Wave Energy Partners Operating LLC of three oil and gas leases to Silver Hill Haynesville E&amp;P LLC. Resolution 67, employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, and not exceeding $70,650,000 of general obligation bonds in one or more series on a taxable or tax exempt basis. Resolution 69, to celebrate Shriners Hospital for Children, Shreveport for 100 years of providing life-changing care to children. Resolution 70, to recognize May 22nd, 2022, as National Maritime Day and encouraging citizens of Shreveport to celebrate this observance. Resolution 71, authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 100 block of Corundelet Drive in honor of Cynthia Renee Hightower Jenkins. Resolution 72, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations for funds budgeted and other charges in the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of these items? Or would there be any questions on tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that Resolution 24 will be withdrawn at the city attorney's request. If that's correct, I would just encourage the administration to find alternate counsel to pursue the claims that were contemplated about that resolution. They do seem, in my opinion, to be worth pursuing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Nicholson, I'm definitely looking into that. That was going to be the purpose of me speaking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Will there be any questions on any of these items on tomorrow?
Resolution 56.
56?
Yes.
All right. You have a question today or tomorrow?
Just if we had any headway in between the last meetings that we've had with Allmatt?
Mr. Chair, have we had any headway with 56 with Allmatt?
No. As a matter of fact, it was indicated, and it may be in Exhibit B, Exhibit A, or attached to the documents to this resolution, about how the costs have actually been passed on by Allmatt to the city. Doesn't appear to be any indication that Allmatt is going to absorb any of the cost increase, that they want the city to absorb all those costs. And we have all the correspondence to them, letting them know that we will proceed to take action pursuant to the terms of the contract, depending on what happens tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just reiterate the concerns that I and other members have expressed previously. The representatives of Allmatt did tell us at our last council meeting that of all their municipal clients, the city of Shreveport is the only client or customer whom they've asked to pass on costs of this nature. Have they participated in a bid process with the understanding that the bid would be binding? I'm very concerned about the long-term consequences of allowing them better to back out of a firm bid. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to May 24th, 2022?
Resolution 73, authorizing the mayor to execute a carpet of endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Facility Planning and Control Division of Administration for the Greenwood Road Extension, Greenwood Industrial Park Road Asphalt Road Planning and Construction.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. If not, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to May 24th, 2022?
Ordinance 65, amending the 2022 Budget for Streets Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 66, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Any questions on those items? If not, Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance number 72, to amend certain portions of Chapter 26 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architectural and engineering selection process, and I understand that it's only relative to Amendment Number Three. Ordinance 55, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 56, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 57, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 58, amending the 2022 Budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 59, declaring certain city property to be surplus property. Ordinance 60, authorizing encroachment into the city's public right-of-way located on portions, on a portion of Dean Road and Cedar Creek Drive as more fully described herein, and to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute an encroachment permit with Pine Wave Energy. Ordinance 61, to amend Chapter 102, Article 2 and 3A of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, Code of Ordinances relative to vehicle hire license fees and tax cap fares. Ordinance 62, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Stoner Avenue approximately 260 feet east of Crestwell Avenue, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-3 multifamily residential district to C-1 neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance 63, zoning case number 22-5-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Yuri Drive approximately 200 feet south of King's Place, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from I-1 light industrial district to IMU industrial mixed-use district. Ordinance 64, zoning case number 22-16-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Stevens Road and Florida of Lucas Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-1-7 single-family residential district to R-1-7 single-family residential district put planned unit development district and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be removed from the table today?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have no property standards, ABO appeal to consider today. We have no MPC or ZVA appeals to consider tomorrow. We have two taxi appeals to consider with the, will the representative from SPD come forward? Madam Clerk, so that I won't mess these names up, would you pronounce those names?
Christopher Van Rusendall.
Sir, you can just have a seat on the front row. Yes, sir.
Any misdemeanor involving moral turpitude defined for the purpose of this article as long as, as article as long or repetitive history of violence or criminal behavior against the criminal laws of this state has not served any part of a sentence, therefore, within five years of turning in this application. He was charged in 2018 felony probation, did receive a letter saying that he was off of probation in 2020, but it doesn't meet the five-year requirement. And he's, has multiple arrests within a five-year time span as well.
Thank you. So what's your recommendation to the council?
Deny.
Any council member have any questions for Mr. Glass?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What was the offensive conviction in 2018, please?
So, I'll pull the rap sheet. So in 2017, it was a felony theft. Okay, I'll take you all the way back to again. 2016, he received five years probation of hard labor suspended for three years of supervised probation on 4/29/2016. That would have ended on 4 of April of 2019. He violated a probation in 2017 with felony theft and had his probation revoked from the 2016.
2016 was for what?
It's going to be monetary instrument abuse felony.
You say he received a fully probated sentence and then violated the terms of his probation and was sent to prison?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, he was violated probation of the, yeah. And then 2018, received another charge of monetary instrument abuse.
Was he sent to prison for the probation violation?
I think he was just put back on probation. But I guess he did turn in a paper last year saying he was taken off probation of, I think, August of 2020. But it still wouldn't meet the requirements of the five years. Yeah. August 28th, 2020.
We're going to have them come up. Okay. Okay. You recited the statute that applies to this decision. Does the statute require, and I, the city attorney can chime in on this too, does it require a five-year period free of probation or, or just a term of imprisonment or both?
Of the sentence. So, has not served any part of a sentence within five years before the application. So he didn't complete his sentence to August 28th of 2020.
It says he has never, he has never been convicted anywhere under the laws of this state or of this city or any other city within five years and has not served any part of a sentence, therefore, within five years before the date of the filing of this application, et cetera.
And was he convicted in 2018 or something? Well, probation violation's different than an underlying conviction. That's problematic, too.
Felony theft was 2017, August. And the 2018 charge was on probation for monetary five years hard labor suspended.
So, so August, August of 2017, that's?
If he was convicted in August of 2017, that's inside five years?
On the disposition, it says the GTPS monetary instrument abuse begins 10/26/2018 and 7/2 of 2022. So that was his sentence.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to come?
Okay.
Would you state your name and address on the record, please?
Christopher Van Rusendall, 741 Robinson Place, Apartment B. First of all, I only got one charge and one probation revocation. My original charge is like 2014, 2015 of monetary instrument abuse. Back in 16 or 17, I violated probation and got my sentence reinstated, did two years in prison, got out on parole for the violation of probation, completed that. Now, if you read the statute on what they're trying to deny before, they're talking about long, repetitive, or I can't remember the other word, but against criminal law. I have one charge on my rap sheet, not multiple. I have a few arrests from the past, but not convictions. And the whole city ordinance, if you read it, does not retain to the single charge that I have. It's not multiple charges of the same charge. I was permitted last year, and if I was in violation of the city ordinance, why didn't they revoke my permit like they could have?
So, sir, your main occupation is taxi driving?
Yes, sir. I've been doing it almost 19 years.
And if we, if we deny you of that, then you wouldn't have any other support?
I'd have to figure something else out. It took a lot of fighting to get my license back and, you know, I conversed with y'all last year and with the police department, when they originally denied me and then overturned their own decision and permitted me. So I've been permitted for the last year. Now that I come back and reapply for a permit, they're trying to deny me under moral turpitude again, but they're trying to define it their way instead of by the way the statute reads.
Yes, sir. So let me ask you a question if, and I'm just asking. If we would, say that we would give you a permit for six months and let that be a probationary procedure, and that if everything go well, then we'll be good to go, would you agree to those, would you agree to that?
Yes, sir.
And I'm just asking, of course, I'll have to.
I haven't been in trouble since I was released. Not one traffic ticket, not one arrest, nothing, and that's almost five years now.
Yes, Councilman Butcher.
I'll argue.
Councilman Jackson.
Councilman Jackson, then I have a question.
My question, do you own your own vehicle or do you drive for somebody?
I lease it. I've been driving for, well, it used to be Action Taxi, and then it went to Taxi now through River City, but I've been with them off and on for 19 years.
But you do have a supervisor where you drive for?
Yes.
Councilman Butcher.
I'm a little bit confused. So, so you were issued a license last year?
Yes, sir.
With the same, with everything that you have?
Yes, sir.
Background-wise, is that right, Corporal Glass?
He was denied last year. I'm not sure who overturned it, but he received a denial letter just like he did this year. And I'm not sure if it came to council or how they.
Didn't come to us. That's, that's my only hang-up right there is that if we gave it to him last year and he's been working and he's not had any infractions since the time he's been working, I know what the law says, but it looks like there was a breakdown somewhere last year because you've been driving since last year.
Yes, sir.
And you have a license that was issued to you last year.
Yeah, I got it.
You don't, you're not sure. Is that right, Corporal Glass? I mean, does he, he has a license?
Yes, I'm assuming Corporal Cisco or Sergeant Cisco issued him, but he was sent a denial letter and he signed for the denial letter. I never seen anything about an appeal from that letter, so I don't know. I basically.
We had a conversation on the phone earlier last week, and I think you did tell me you appealed it last year to the council.
Yeah, I talked to somebody with the city council and a sergeant over the unit.
Did you come down here?
No, I was like with them on the phone. I just, I don't remember who I was talking to there.
Okay. I guess the basic is that if the license was issued and it didn't come before us, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Madam, Madam, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, do the rules allow this witness to be sworn? I thought they did, in my view, if they did.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The rules, do our rules allow this witness to be sworn?
We can swear amen if you'd like.
Please do, and then I want to ask a few questions.
If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Sir, again, how many felony convictions do you have?
One.
When were you convicted?
I believe in 2014, 2015.
In which court?
Bossier Parish.
What were you convicted of doing?
Monetary instrument abuse.
What were the facts underlying that conviction generally?
Just a forged check.
Was it one forged check or multiple forged?
I think two. And it totaled less than 500.
Okay, you heard the officer reference some additional activity on your criminal record after 2015.
Those were arrests, but no conviction.
Was your probation ever revoked at any time?
Yeah, my probation was revoked.
When did that happen?
I think in 2016.
What did you do to have your probation revoked in 2016?
I failed to report to probation, leaving the parish without notifying them. I was working down in Keshada.
Anything else that you did to revoke your probation?
Outside that, one, he's talking about a felony theft, but that never went nowhere. It was just an arrest.
When were you arrested for felony theft?
The same, same year that my probation was revoked.
And that felony arrest, theft arrest didn't have anything to do with the revocation of your probation?
No.
What about misdemeanor convictions?
I couldn't tell you last time I had one.
Have you ever been convicted of a misdemeanor?
Petty theft, but I couldn't tell you when that was.
When were you convicted of petty theft?
Back in my twenties, I think.
Back when you were in your twenties?
Yeah.
How old are you now?
Forty. Well, 39, I turned 40 in October.
And when did your probation terminate or has it terminated?
My parole.
Or you're either parole or probation?
It was supposed to terminate in 2017, but that was during the coronavirus, and it was so complicated to get a hold of the parole office because they were shut down and didn't want us to come up there, so it was just basically playing phone tag with them. And I finally got the release papers from them in 2018.
When in 2018?
I don't remember. I'd have to look. August 28th of 2020.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, of course, it's always the pleasure of the body, but my inclination is not to take action on this day and just to take it under advisement and make sure that we have straight all the facts relevant to the decision we've got to make. I don't want to put a man out of a job that he's been doing for years with no problems, but I want us to comply with our ordinances, and I'd just like somebody to look at the suit record of these criminal convictions before we act, and I don't know that that's happened yet.
Sir, do you remember calling anybody in the city council office, talking to them?
Last year I did. I don't remember who it was.
Were you real nasty to them?
Not that I'm ever.
I just, somebody brought it to the table that, maybe it was out of frustration or whatever, but I'm like Councilman Nicholson, I really don't want to put you out of work because putting you out of work would just cause you to do something else that possibly wouldn't be legal. I just, I don't know how to put people out of work. I, I just, I don't know how to put people out of work. So, anyone else have anything else to say? Councilman Boach?
I'm on the same page with, with you and Councilman Nicholson. The only thing that I would like to find out is how he got a license last year. Uh, in the meantime, if we're, we're putting something together, I want to know how this happened last year. Because it, it, that's, it's not, it's not on you. I'm, I'm asking the police department.
If you're going by my convictions, okay, I only have two things on my rap sheet. Two things all the way around. I got my rap sheet in my back pocket, shows monetary instrument abuse and a probation revocation. Moral turpitude that's defined by the article does not pertain to that.
Well, I mean, we're here now with, they're asking us to revoke your license, but last year you got it, and we were closer to the conviction then. I want to find out why you were given the license. I'm not saying take it away from you, because I'm, I'm with these guys. I would, I would prefer you to be working as opposed to not work.
I've been out of work for weeks.
Yeah.
It's hard.
So, um, I'm, I'm with, with y'all on that.
We probably could postpone it one day until tomorrow and look at what we need to look at. I don't, if he's not able to work while this is pending, I think we ought to turn it around quickly. That's my, that's my suggestion.
So you make a motion?
I'm going to postpone this one day until tomorrow.
Sir, we're going to postpone this until tomorrow, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Do you need a second?
Yeah, I do need a second.
All second.
Second.
Moed by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Fuller, that this item be postponed until tomorrow. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote. Thank you.
Any clerk?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just need to make sure that he understands he needs to be here tomorrow.
Sir. Sir, do you understand you need to be here tomorrow?
At what time?
3 o'clock.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Madam clerk. Oh, Councilman Boach.
What she cares with something.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow at 3:00.
Madam clerk.
There is one more taxi cab appeal, Ms. Carol Moore, VIP Taxi Service.
Counselor people, my name is Gene Moore, and I am the husband of Carol Moore.
Madam clerk.
And one of the mistakes that the chief of police made.
Would you, would you state your name and address for the record? Uh, miss, excuse me, Mr. Glass, that you want to come first?
And again, I like the witnesses sworn, just as a matter of good practice, boys.
Okay.
Mr. Glass, would you?
Mr. and Ms. Moore, he wants to swear. You both in as well?
Would you all come? He's going, she's going to swear you in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Glass, would you proceed?
On April 25th, I submitted a letter for a request or recommendation to revoke VIP Taxis LLC, their vehicle-for-hire permit. The Vehicle-for-Hire Office received information from the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office and the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office about an employee at VIP Taxi operating without, Taxi Cab without a license. It was discovered the individual was a registered sex offender. And it was then discovered that he applied and was denied by the Vehicle-for-Hire Office on November 2, uh, November 1st, 2021, due, he failed to meet the qualifications. And this was a, a major deal, being legislation passed after the kidnapping and murder of Justin Blossom that resulted in an enactment of LRS 15553, prohibition of employment for certain sex offenders. So on, uh, after receiving this information, I conducted my investigation. On March 24th, about 1,300 hours, I met with Ms. Carol Moore. The interview was recorded. Moore advised that her husband, or Vernon Moore, her husband, advised that he was the owner of VIP Taxi and that he only put his wife's Carol's name on it so they could get more money for the business loan with her being a minority. Carol Moore was the only person that applied for the taxi permit with the city, and she was the only person to complete a background at the time. Um, according to the Shreveport City Ordinance 10242, if the applicant is a firm, corporation, or association, the application shall state the names and addresses of the officers, directors, or members. Statements made by Vernon and previously made by the manager, Llewellyn Harkness, show that these omissions were done intentionally and in a direct violation of the ordinance. I explained this to Carol, that we, the Vehicle-for-Hire Office, had documented at least five vehicles operating without an inspection. Also with the, they said that they did not know that the sex offender was a registered sex offender when he applied. But the interview was done with Mr. Samuels. Uh, it was also recorded. During the interview, Samuel stated he had been driving for VIP from November until January 22nd, uh, 2022. Samuel said he knew he was not supposed to operate a taxi. Samuel also said he operated the taxi in Bossier, inside of Bossier and Shreveport. Samuel, Samuels explained that VIP knew that he was a sex offender, and Chad allowed him to work anyways. Samuels also asked about the, did he receive the decline permit from the Vehicle-for-Hire Office, which he said he did and he knew. Uh, Samuels was discovered to be operating VIP Taxi number 500 without a license, and the taxi was not inspected by the city as well. Also, uh, VIP Taxi has showed complete disregard for the laws and regulations. Carol Moore and VIP Taxi has continued to operate as a business even after the license has been revoked. They were advised by the deputy chief that they can no longer operate their taxis in a hearing we had at the police station, and they continue to operate taxis as we speak. Carol Moore was advised that, yes, manager Llewellyn Harkness called Friday asking about if the taxis, taxis could operate it, and they were advised once again that they could not operate, but they're still operating as we speak. Or up till yesterday. VIP has yet to produce any receipts or anything we asked for to complete an audit as of 4/11/2022.
Chair.
Yes.
So there's one license for the company, and it's just in one person's name?
Yes.
Okay. Just thinking about like some of the stuff, we also have like liquor licenses with people interloping and that kind of thing to make sure that there's no confusion for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Officer, is it, is it not part of a taxi services job to ensure that its drivers are properly licensed?
Yes.
I mean, do, do our ordinances impose that obligation on taxi services?
Yes, it says that they will be responsible if, uh, they can take any charge that a driver can receive.
And what was the name of the registered sex offender working for this company?
It'd be Ontario Samuels.
What was he convicted of doing to become a registered sex offender?
Uh, I think it was third-degree rape.
They had a rapist working for him?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we, do we have legislation, just, Justin Blossom?
Yes.
Legislation?
Yes.
Are the cab companies required to do a background check?
Uh, they come through us to receive a license when we do the background check.
Okay.
And we denied him, but they still allowed him to drive.
And how long did he work?
From November to January.
So he did apply, and you did deny, and they still hired? They never said, well, why did, did you all know that you had him driving without, am I allowed to ask them that?
The ordinance states that that driver has to have a license present in the vehicle before they can start.
So that means that they ostensibly knew that he didn't have a license, and they let him leave in their car?
Samuel stated that he did know. And I think it's even stated on that application that he turned in, that he was checked that he was a sex offender.
Who is Chad?
I'm assuming that's going to be the son-in-law.
Will you reiterate the reason that we added harsher stipulations about this particular thing and why it's so important, because you've mentioned it, but will you just reiterate that?
Uh, legislation was passed after the kidnapping and murder of Justin Blossom, which resulted in the enactment of 15553, prohibition of employment for sec, certain sexual, sex offenders.
Kidnapping, rape, and murder.
Yes.
Yeah.
Of a 12-year-old?
Of a 12-year-old.
Of a 12-year-old.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, I guess the charges are still pending from the vehicles that were operating this weekend. Also with, uh, failing to report the receipts for the audit, we're still waiting on those records.
Is, is there any criminal prosecution that can happen for this, this type of offense?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Would you all come and present your case?
Uh, the gentleman made a number of misstatements that I would like to correct. The first one.
Sir, would you identify yourself first?
Would you state your name and address?
Eugene Moore. I am the only member of VIP Taxi Services LLC. Mr. Bradley commented that the permit for VIP Taxi Services LLC was revoked. That's incorrect. The letter was addressed to Carol Moore, who is not a member of VIP Taxi Services LLC, and it made reference to VIP Taxi Service, not VIP Taxi Service LLC. Then it made the comment on page three of the letter that VIP is to discontinue any taxi services because your vehicle-for-hire business permit has been revoked indefinitely. VIP Taxi Service never has had a business permit because it's not even an entity. It's a trade name. Carol Moore was the one it was addressed to, and she's not even a member of the VIP Taxi Services LLC. I'm the only member. I have the articles in the corporation. I have the Secretary of State's status report verifying that.
Sir, are you suggesting that the notice was inadequate because it said VIP Taxi Service rather than VIP Taxi Service LLC? Is that your position?
Well, that's one of my positions. I got some more.
All right, well, let's hear them, please.
Okay, another one, it says, in said letter, it says, "Unlicensed drivers." It says, "If, if any person not licensed under this article is found operating any vehicle carrying passengers for hire, the chief police may immediately take action to suspend or review, revoke the license held by the owner and operator of the vehicle or by an association of owner-operators." So the first time I read that, I said, "Well, why did they spell out owner and operator?" Then it came right after that and said, "An association of owner-operators." My point is that the reason it's spelled out owner and operator is because it's dealing with what in our profession is called an owner-operator. It's a person such as John Doe that owns a vehicle, and he pays VIP Taxi Services LLC a fee for VIP Taxi Services to receive calls for transportation. He dispatches those calls to this owner-operator.
Sir, let me ask you a question. Did you all have a sex offender working for y'all?
After the fact, we found out he did, but I'd like to go into that if I may too.
You said you, you did have one working for you?
I was told he was.
Did you have a sex offender working for you? Did you have a person driving your cab without a license?
I did, uh, there was a person driving the cab without a license, but I would like to explain that to you.
Oh, you will. My question is, how did he obtain your vehicle? Did he hold somebody up to get the keys?
No, sir, I can, I can explain that to you, if I may. The first thing he did, he went down to apply to get his permit. He came back to us with a receipt where he had paid to get that permit.
So you drive with the receipt and not a permit?
He had a receipt. That's exactly right.
So he didn't need to, he didn't need to show you a permit?
Well, let me, let me, let me go on with it, because this is during COVID. And I, I think you know all the things that people jump through just to get business done during COVID.
I don't.
So then we called our insurance company and said, "This gentleman does not have a permit because permits are backed up of being issued."
Hold it, men, sir. You said he brought you a receipt.
Where he paid the vehicle-for-hire department for $50.
If he brought you a receipt, why did you call the insurance company and say he don't have a permit when you thought the receipt was a receipt for the permit?
Well, the receipt was in lieu of the permit, in our opinion, and in the insurance company's opinion, because the, the state was backed up issuing permits during COVID-19.
So which, what's the name of the person who spoke to you at the insurance company that said what you said? Who can you confirm that with?
There was a lady down there by the name of Pamela that I called. She's with the Taxi Cab Insurance Store in New Orleans, Louisiana.
What was Pamela's last name?
Pardon me?
What was Pamela?
She, she answered Pamela, and I just talked to Pamela.
So when you called and said, uh, such and such, so she said, "I'm Pamela"?
When they answer, they tell you their name. I'm not the one that called originally, Mr., uh, Mr. Harkness called originally to see if that was acceptable. This Pamela lady said that throughout the state, people could not get vehicles-for-hire permits because of the backlog.
But you could get a receipt.
But you can get a receipt, and she said...
What was the receipt stating?
It said he paid $50 to the vehicle-for-hire permit.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Boach.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Real quick.
Okay.
So, on his application, according to the police department, it said that he was a sex offender. Did, did you not ask, you got a receipt, but did you not ask for a copy of the application?
On his application that he filled out with us, he did not show anything about a sex offender. He checked all the no boxes that needed to be checked, no. So another accusation by Mr. Bradley is incorrect. We did not know he was a sex offender.
But, but on the application he made with the police department, it did mark that he was a sex offender?
To my knowledge, there's a place on there that you're, that he did not mark that he was a sex offender. In our hearing with the chief of police, they said in that hearing that he had already applied previously and been denied, but yet they took his $50 and, uh, ran his report again, knowing he was already denied the first time. And secondly, the, you know, on the driver's license where it's got registered sex offender, one month before he got his driver's license, they removed that for privacy. So that was not only his driver's license that we made a copy of. This was a COVID-19-related, some our fault, some the vehicle-for-hire fault, some insurance company's fault, some Department of Motor Vehicles for not issuing these permits fault. some insurance company's fault, some Department of Motor Vehicles for not issuing these permits fault. All had to do with COVID-19.
Have you, if, have you received a denial that you all shouldn't be operating at this particular time?
Well, the denial that we had was saying that your vehi- your vehicle addressed to VIP Taxi Service, your vehicle for hire business permit has been revoked.
Okay, hold it right there.
But.
What, hold it right, what does revoke mean?
Revote means it's been taken away.
So you got that and it said it has been revoked, right?
Yes, sir.
As of yesterday, were you all still driving for hire?
Yes, sir, and I think you can look and see what would have happened. If five weeks ago, if we had stopped driving cabs, denying people that are in this parish transportation, because in my opinion, the vehicle for hire permit for the applicant and holder of the permit was never mentioned. The person that was the member of the, the LLC was incorrectly stated. So nothing that the chief of police did in his revocation was accurate.
Mister Chair, so VIP, VIP Tax, VIP Taxi Services of Monroe, West Monroe, is what Ms. Moore operates.
That's right, and there again, there again, Mister Bradley misspoke. We did not transfer VIP Taxi Service LLC to my wife. We started, because we operated in Monroe, VIP Taxi Services of Monroe, West Monroe, and that was for the purpose of getting an SBA-type loan for minorities and females are considered minorities for our growth in the future. My wife never has been a member or associated with VIP Taxi Services LLC.
Do both companies operate out of the same taxes?
VIP of Monroe, West Monroe was closed when we left Monroe. That was probably three, three, four years ago.
So the company is still in good standing?
Ma'am?
The company is still in good standing under your wife?
Is VIP Taxi Services of Monroe, West Monroe?
Is it? Yes.
Uh, I don't think that he's, it pays a Secretary of State filing fee because it went out of business.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
But you did say you used money in order to help with this tax services, correct? You applied for a loan and those funds were used?
No, I said that's the reason that my wife and my daughter-in-law were in the VIP Taxi Services of Monroe, West Monroe. So if we needed funds, they could apply for an SBA because it was easier to get a SBA loan for my, a minority than it was for a male person.
So why would they need an SBA loan if the company is no longer active?
Well, this is the reason we formed it originally, not recently.
But it was formed in 2015.
I'm sorry?
It was formed in 2015.
The, the business was formed in 2015?
Yes, sir.
Monroe, West Monroe, that's right.
It was formed in 2015.
Right.
She, the last report filed was this year.
Ma'am?
The last report filed was this year in 2022.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding.
Last report filed was 2022, Ms. Moore, is that correct?
Possibly.
Yes. You're the only officer of this company. And so what you're saying is that the letter that we sent to you all was issued to the wrong person.
It was issued to the wrong person, it was issued to the wrong company, and the, the part that the chief of police hung his hat on had nothing to do with the business.
Okay.
It only had to do with an owner-operator and we're not an owner-operator.
But you're still responsible at that point that you had someone from your company driving a cab.
I understand that, but the penalties should not be putting us out of business.
Why not?
Can you see what would happen to the community if we were put out in over two hundred?
Do you know what risk you put to the community by having a rapist driving a taxi cab?
Well, I didn't do it intentionally, ma'am. We didn't do it intentionally. We followed everything that everybody was telling us to follow during COVID.
When did you receive notification that he was a registered sex offender?
Pardon me?
When did you receive?
In March of this year.
You received that notification?
Like two months ago. They didn't, even when they found out it's vehicle for hire, they didn't even send a, a notification to us.
Okay, real quick, so VIP Taxi Services LLC, it's based out of Oak Grove, Louisiana?
That's, that is our address because I, I'm a CPA by profession. I have a CPA office in Oak Grove, and I wanted all the mail to go to my CPA office to where I could get it timed and it wouldn't lay on somebody's desk.
You're a certified public accountant.
I have an apartment in Shreveport. I'm sorry?
You're a certified public accountant?
I am a certified public accountant. And I have a, a apartment here in Shreveport, I have a home in Oak Grove, Louisiana.
So the license. Corporal, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to ask him a question.
Okay.
So, so the license that we have with the city of Shreveport, whose name is it in? What is, what is their license now?
It was signed by Carol Moore and had a witness that says Carol Moore, um, owner must have a background submitted and she signed signature. I understand and agree that Shreveport Police Department should have fully investigated my record felony misdemeanors. Further, I waive my rights and I waive my rights and if any may, I may have in due release any and all persons liability in connection with furnishing such information about me to the above listed agency to who I am making application. Signature Carol Moore, ten, nine of twenty twenty. That was for the background check that she signed on ownership for VIP Taxi.
It, it, it's VIP Taxi, is that right?
Or it just says VIP on here.
Did she fill out that application?
Yes.
Okay.
Ma'am, ma'am. If you'd like to speak, you can come and state your name and address.
My name is Carol Moore.
Come to the mic, please.
My name is Carol Moore, eighty-five thirty Highway Two East, Oak Grove, Louisiana.
State whatever you were stating.
Okay, we have a CPA firm in Oak Grove. I fill out license for clients and I might sign them for them under my name, not their names. So it's not unusual for me to file for occupational license and stuff like that.
Well, I think my, my point is the application only says VIP. The, the, Mister Moore's saying that it's VIP Taxi Service LLC and then we got VIP Taxi Services Monroe, West Monroe, but all it had on the application was VIP and, and you signed it as the owner. So I, I think that that argument, Mister Moore, is really not a valid one, in my opinion, but I'm one of seven.
Well, I mean, it's valid that I'm, per the state, I'm not an owner.
Uh, per, per the state, you're an officer of VIP Taxi Services Monroe, West Monroe LLC with the recent report filed of twenty twenty-two this year, Ms. Moore.
I'm Monroe, West Monroe, I am.
I would think it would be very strange that if you signed this application that you didn't know what you were actually signing. I understand that you can sign.
No, I'm just saying I sign for a lot of businesses.
I understand that you stand for a lot of business, but I think this was pretty specific, what this application was for, for a taxi cab driver.
What? No, I have nothing to do with the, uh, application for a taxi cab driver. And I like to voice my opinion on that too. When somebody goes down to City Hall or wherever they get these permits, why aren't those permits that's denied sent to the company instead of to the person that's getting the job? That's what started the whole thing. That should have been sent to the company because they had to know he was trying to go to work for a taxi. On the application?
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell y'all how to run your business, but, but I can, I can tell you this, that before I let somebody with this law being on the books, before I let somebody drive one of my taxi cabs, I don't really see the license.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So.
I agree wholeheartedly.
As manager, can I be sworn in to straighten out some things that have been misspoken as well?
Wait a minute, and then on this, on this appeal, then I got Mister Vernon who signed and also Carol Moore who signed for the appeal. So if she has nothing to do with the LLC, then why would you sign?
Because the, the people at the appeal office said they couldn't accept my signature even though I was the only member because the letter that the police sent had my wife's name on it. Some of the appeals people, and Mister Tony can tell you, had to have my wife's name on it in addition to mine. You'll see, I signed first, my wife came back after they called her and told her that she had to sign, and she came back and also signed because that was the advice of counsel for City Hall.
And. Mister Chairman?
Yes.
We, we did request Ms. Moore's signature since her name was the one on the permit.
Okay, and, and how long did they consent? How long did you all continue to operate after receiving?
We've, we've operated since, uh, April the fourth. Because the penalty for violation is in section one fourteen, and nothing in section one fourteen talks about putting a business out of business.
Okay, thank you.
Section one fourteen only talks about a thousand dollars or sixty days in jail.
So which one, so which one of you thought you was gonna do?
Section one oh-two doesn't talk about.
So which one you thought, which, which one of those you thought you was gonna do? The sixty days in jail or pay a thousand dollars? Which one of those would you intend on doing?
I think a thousand dollars. I, I admit that somebody in our, our business made a mistake.
Okay, that's, 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 that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you, sir, that was it.
Can I please speak?
Councilman Booch.
Uh, just real quick, do you have a copy of your articles in corporation?
Yes, I do, and I got a copy of statute of, uh, status report from the Secretary of State.
I'm looking at it, I mean, I see it, I don't need that. It looks like you made a change five-three of twenty twenty-two.
Did we?
Yes.
And this was shown me and my son. My son started it, uh, with me as a member. My son didn't like all of the regulations I was saying. My, my son withdrew to leave me the only one.
Thank you.
Can I show that to y'all?
Mister Chairman?
No.
Councilman Jay.
Sir, so at no time was your wife ever part of this company?
No, I, I, I swear it on stack of cards.
But like, we have a license right here with her name on it, so.
But, but that's VIP. VIP Taxi Services, the cabs operate under VIP Taxi Services LLC. And I'm the only member and according to the letter.
You're the only member, but she's the name on the license for that company that's operating in Shreveport, not Monroe.
I'm sorry?
The license in Shreveport is whichever one we have here that has her name on it. So for operating in Shreveport, that's the license that you all have been using. This is from twenty twenty-two.
It's your name and social security number. But it, but it's yours.
This is binding you to this company as the licensee.
Can we, can, can we be sworn in to speak so we can get this back on where it needs to be?
I'll think of where we're at. Oh, go ahead.
We need to understand what's actually happening and the severity of that and the penalty of that and what it, how it happened.
Hold up, wait, 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 I don't even know who this, who is this?
That's why I'm asked to be sworn in, a manager.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Jacqueline Llewellyn Harkness, three-two-five-seven Burke Coons Industrial Loop, apartment six-one-zero-five, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-zero-eight.
Would you swear her in?
Yep. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so it'll help you, God?
I do. The part about Chad knowing that Ontario was a sex offender is absolutely false. I don't know what Ontario told you, that's absolutely false. Our oldest son is the same age as Justin Bloxum, and my nephews lived in the neighborhood that he was abducted from. I know Ms. Amanda, I know Duke, who prosecuted that case. I was involved on getting that legislature. I was very passionate about that, and I don't want to lose sight in all this LLC and who signed what. It is very disturbing that he was able to get in a cab, and it did not happen because of Ontario getting a receipt. When COVID hit and the Louisiana Department of Motor Vehicles was hijacked and held for ransom to where we couldn't get driver's licenses even tested, then the vehicle department, vehicle for hire department was behind and backlogged and by appointment only. The insurance stated that they would accept receipts, and this is the same insurance that supplies insurance for all the cab companies here, that they would accept receipts until the actual printed permit was received. So it didn't start with Ontario. It had been going on for a couple of months of getting the receipts. We would follow up to get the actual permit, send it to the insurance company once we had it in hand. Mister Ontario started right after our city inspections of twenty twenty-one. Didn't have his receipt the following week, called on it, was told that Taisha would be out until the twenty-eighth. Followed up on it after then, could never get it in hand, and then he turned the cab in in January. And thankfully, nothing happened. My children are up there at that office, my eight-year-old is up there at that office. But never do we allow anyone to ride in a cab that's under the age of eighteen without an, an adult. To my knowledge, he was never in a cab alone with a minor. I'm not wanting to get bogged down in all of this, who was served and who's signed, because that's all legit. A mistake was made, there's people in all sides that can help prevent it in the future. And he's applied and put down that he was applying to work at VIP. He's applied twice, been rejected twice, and you think he's going to be honest and tell us that? He went and changed his license. We were fooled, we were under the assumption that something was valid during the time of COVID based off our insurance company. We went with it, unfortunately, this happened, and I'm sick about it. It will never, never will another person get in a cab without a permit and, and I don't care how long they have to wait. I'm just grateful nothing happened. But to sit here and start turning it into this other, it's unnecessary. We're here about Ontario. Thank God nothing happened while he was there. Never again will a sex offender be in one of our cabs, and I worked this stuff twenty-four-seven for eight years, night and day. I'm passionate about my employees, I'm passionate about our customers, and we're talking thirty-something people. Y'all are deciding whether or not they have a job today, and they've been with us for years.
Ma'am, I'd like to just make one correction. We're not deciding whether they have a job or not. Your company decided whether they'd have a job or not by not taking care of what you're explaining now. If you had taken care of that, then we wouldn't be here today.
If assumptions wouldn't have been made and mistakes made. I'm not saying y'all have the ability to prevent a lot of people I truly care about from losing their jobs. I understand, I'm not putting it on y'all by any means.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm, I'm here owning it, but my husband did not know he was a sex offender. He did not disclose it to us, and never would have brought one around my job.
I'm gonna make one last comment, Mister Chair, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't care what the insurance company said. Our laws of the city of, of Shreveport say that you have to have that permit to drive.
Right.
And I, I'm with you. I, we didn't bring up this LLC stuff. I mean, in my opinion, the person that filled out that application was served and we've done our due diligence. As far as, um, your employees, I, I really, I hate it for them. But I don't see where us as a council, I, you know, you've got a lot of motion in this because you, I mean, you work there. But for us, I'm telling you, from an outsider looking in, I mean, I've seen your taxi cabs, but that's about it. Um, I'm an outsider looking in, it looks pretty dead gum bad.
But eight years, we've never had a problem with anything till COVID hit. We've never been at a council meeting, never had any violations, any probation, it's nothing.
But now we dig into it and find out that the person that owns the company isn't the licensed per, I mean, it's, it's a mess.
Right.
So, you know.
It, it's probably not as big a mess it would be if as many emotions and questions weren't committed at once. If we could sit down, that could probably be very easily straightened out.
Mister Chairman, I moved to a poll replication of the application.
Thank you all for coming. Uh, it has been motioned by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Booch to uphold the decision of the replication. Are there any questions?
One quick question.
Councilman Bow.
Well, don't do background checks on, on, on your, on.
They took that out of the hands of the companies after Justin's case as part of the law. That's why the vehicle for hire permit office does them.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. If not, if there are no other questions at this particular time, we will vote to a poll. Thank you all for coming. You may have a seat, sir.
Mister Chairman, the other comment I'll make is to urge the police chief to pursue criminal charges against these individuals if they don't stop operating their taxis immediately.
Thank you. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are no other appeals, Mister Chair.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
I do not have one, Mr. Chair.
Executive session is done. If there's nothing else to come before this body, we are adjourned.